Okay, we call the order meeting of the board of commissions work session, May the 14th, 2019. At this time, I'd ask David Ross from United Way 211, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and state your business.
My name is Blaine Matthew.
Oh, you're known David Ross.
Filling in for David today. 207 East 21st Street, and I'm with United Way, talking about 211. So what 211 is, it's a free and confidential information referral service for health and human services. And our vision for the 211 service is a community where everyone has access to the resources that they need in order to thrive. We realize that the biggest struggle in receiving help is actually finding the help. So what you can call 211 for is anything from prenatal care to end-of-life care and everything in between. If you need help with utility assistance, rent assistance, or where to find somewhere to eat for the day. And what we're wanting to do with the 211 program is to actually expand our database. Currently, we have 1,400-plus programs currently listed for the grad area. So we are going out and partnering with agencies in all of our counties to make sure that our database is complete. There's several ways that you can reach 211. You can dial 211, you can text, you can call the 844 number, you can text 898-211, or go to our website at greenriver211.org. We also have a smartphone application currently available just on the Android system. The service is available 24/7, 365. What also comes with the 211 is the 211 counts site. It is a data collection site for people who have called in to 211. Their call is logged, and it is available on the site. They also receive a follow-up call three days after getting the referrals. They are then asked if they've received the services or have not received the services, and that is also logged on the website. And what's great about this is it actually really, truly shows where the gaps are in our community. It's not just someone guessing. We have real live data showing this. And currently, for Davis County, we've had 174 calls, most of which have been for housing and shelter, utilities, and healthcare.
That it?
That's it.
Hey, how do you measure your outcomes that you're doing, that you're really actually reaching the people you need to reach?
David, would you like to answer that question?
Thank you. My name's David Ross. I live at 223 East 23rd Street. Your question about outcomes, how do we measure that?
Correct.
What we do is, once we saturate the community with the information about 211, the people that need services will automatically know to dial 211. So the outcomes will be based upon how many people access the service, and then what type of service they actually got. So for example, we have, I think about 58 calls were for housing and shelter, and then of those calls, 18 were for a shelter, and then 14 were for low-cost housing, 14 were for rent assistance, four were for mortgage assistance, two were for landlord-tenant issues. The way 211 is set up is it measures its own outcomes.
Okay.
Okay? And by breaking this down, it's going to be able to give data to our community so that grant writers can take a look at this and say, and use the 211 data in their grant applications. You can say, "We've had 130 calls for housing, and therefore, we know that there's a housing shortage." But we have had that type of data in the past, but what we haven't had is the breakdown, the exact breakdown of how much went to shelters, how much went to landlord-tenant issues. And so, and it's this way for every single issue. All of the issues that are listed, you can drill down very deep and get the information that you need. And what this is going to be, it takes about nine months to a year to get a 211 system off the ground and get it fully functional. What we are doing, we opened in Hancock County this morning, we're opening in Henderson County tonight, we opened in Webster County yesterday, and by the end of next week, we will have all of the counties open in our seven-county area. Once we get the entire area talking on the same wavelength and on the same system, we will be able to measure housing issues in a particular area, a particular neighborhood. We'll be able to tell and to track where people, let's say that they need food assistance, they need meals. We'll be able to tell exactly where they came from, so, because we'll be able to tell which tower they pinged on. Now, how this happens, I don't know. Some of you may understand it, but I don't. So we think this is going to be able to give a lot deeper numbers, and it's going to give a better overall picture for our community on what's working and what's not. Additionally, with the callback option, if a person calls for a particular issue, and they want help with something, and they ask to be called back, the operator will call them back in three to 10 days and say, "Did you get the services that you need? Did you, were you treated well?" They're able to actually get data from the person that actually was required.
That's the outcomes I'm talking about, not the data you're creating, but once somebody asks for the service, and the outcome would be, yes, it was a successful thing. I got housing, I got food, and how are you documenting it? That's the outcome I was talking about.
The system will do that.
The system will do it, okay.
Mayor, more importantly, what, we're going to be using this as a kind of a scorecard for our agencies, because this is not just about the United Way agencies. This is about all the agencies in our community. Commissioner Smith-Wright, I know you're very interested in veterans' issues. So if a veteran is looking for services, now they can dial 211 and be connected to a whole myriad of services. So what we want to do is to partner with the different elements of our community to make sure everything's in here. Because the more data we have in our system, then the better our outcomes are going to be. And as important, Mayor, as you and I have talked in the past, we want to know where people are being referred, and if they're not getting services, we want to know why that is. Now, for the United Way, we will be very interested in that. For other places, we will be following, and what I mean by interested is because we're pulling people together to fund those places, and so we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure those services are being provided. But for the other agencies, we want to make sure that services are there, and if they're not, then we want to know why, so we can give that information back to you.
I have a couple more questions I'd like to ask you. You know, how do these social groups, like the different shelters, how do they get on your list for care, for you to help them? Is there a thing they fill out? Is there, I mean, when was the last time you added somebody to the list?
Well, there's about 1,700.
Lists?
There's about 1,700 services in the 211 list. So they, we reached out to them.
Okay, so somebody that's not ever been, gotten any of your fiduciary responsibility overlooked, how do they, how would they apply to be able to be a part of United Way giving?
Well...
Do they know that? Does everybody know those 1,700 places?
Well, we reached out to, that's what Blaine's been doing for the last year and a half. He's reached out to those organizations, and we've gotten their data. Their data is actually in the database, correct?
Showing your age now that...
I am, I am.
Because I've had several different groups say, you know, "How come we don't get contacted by United Way?" Now, they may have, but these, this is not directors and stuff, and, you know, I just want to try and get it out to the public that if you have an agency that's a shelter, or you've got a food bank, or whatever, that they can have the opportunity to be helped by United Way, but they have to qualify by running a good shop and taking care of their stuff, I assume.
Well, you're talking about the community investment process. We're doing that right now. And we've been in that process for about the last two and a half months. And we've got volunteers that are actually visiting the agencies and taking a look at agencies' financials, and looking at their services, and we're going through that process right now.
But do those agencies have to request that you come, or are you just arbitrarily picking one that says, "Okay, we haven't helped these people before. Let's call them up, see if they'd like to have a visit to be a part of United Way"? Am I making, not making a good question?
I'm not certain that I'm tracking with you.
Okay, Tom Watson's shelter over here's never had any money from United Way, and they're struggling. So how would they get an opportunity to be, to get some funding for social services for what they do?
Okay, I see what you mean. That, for the last several years, we've not, our campaigns have been relatively flat, so we've not added new agencies. However, the board right now is going through a process to where they're looking at how they're going to open the door, and it's not a question of if, it's a question of how. In order to get United Way funds, you've got to have a couple of things. Number one, you've got to be addressing an identified community need. You have to have an annual audit. There are several qualifications that you have to, that all of our partner agencies go through. There's, and there's a qualification process. So that is something that we do every year.
For the ones you're currently serving?
Yes, for the ones we're currently serving. And over the course of the next few years, the United Way is looking at how they're going to open the door, and how they're going to be adding services, because we're in the process of doing a community-wide needs assessment. And we're partnering with the other existing needs assessments that are out there. And as you take a look, your communities change over the course of the years. So sometimes 10 years ago, you may have had one set of needs, but the needs change. Sometimes, funding may be plentiful in one area of our social service system, but it may be lacking in another. So it's necessary, in order to keep the human service delivery system operating, sometimes you have to transfer money from place to place. And that's something that we've been doing actually for the last several years.
So you have a standard 10 social service programs you support?
There's...
Let's just say, I'm not, no, I'm...
There's 22 in Davis County, and there's 82 in our seven-county, our six-county area.
So you've got all 22, you're serving all 22 of them then?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have a reserve fund built up for emergencies if one of these shelters has something?
Yes, we absolutely do. Our board policy indicates that we have to keep a reserve, and we're always within that reserve.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Dave, if...
Mag later.
If someone calls in with a particular need, and let's say there's three agencies that provide that need, do they get, how, do they get all three, or how do you, how do you handle that?
Well, if they call the 211 line, they get, there's usually three agencies that are referred to them. And depending on, from where they're calling, they'll, they may refer them to the agency that's the closest to them in physical location, or it may be an agency that's open late at night or early in the morning. It depends on the caller, and it depends on the specific need of the caller. So that's the reason why we want to have every agency in our seven, in our actually seven-county area, we want every agency entered, and so that we can have the hours of operation that they're open, what you have to do to qualify. Because the goal of this is so that we quit sending people all over town trying to find services. One of the, when you're looking for help, one of the main reasons that people don't get help is they don't know where to call. So by having a single number to call, if you can dial 211, and you can get the help you need, we want to open this to any agency that is providing services that, that people can use.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith-Wright?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So this is nationwide, right?
Yes.
Because I saw on the afternoon program yesterday with Ron Rhodes, they were talking about this over in Evansville.
Right.
But back to the question of how you give out your funding to all of these agencies, if you've got, say, three homeless shelters, and is there a way that, that they all can rotate on who gets the money? You know what I'm saying? We have so many different agencies here that need help, and we can't afford to give to every single person. And I mean, your, your agency can't afford to...
We're aware of that, yes.
Yeah, okay. So what I'm saying is, you know, there's, in my opinion, there's got to be a way that we start working together, and these agencies working together, these different homeless shelters working together. Maybe I'll get it this, this time, and maybe the mayor's agency will get it the next time, or whatever, because it makes some of them feel like, well, I'm not important enough, they don't, I never get anything, but they always get it, and that kind of stuff. So do you think that that's a, that's a possibility, that there can be some kind of meeting of the minds that this year Boware Center gets it, and next year, the Patino Shelter gets it? So that, because if you divide it up too much, in my opinion, it doesn't do as much as it could if they got more money. You know what I'm saying? If you don't get, like, if you give a kid a scholarship for $30, what's that going to do?
Right.
It's not going to buy a book.
Right. Well, what we're seeing is, we're working around needs, and we're working around, like, the homeless community in general. Let's, let's just take that. If the homeless community wanted to come together and file one application, and they wanted to do that on behalf of the agencies within there, then that would be something that, that I think in the future, that the United Way would take a look at. Because what we're wanting to see happen is agencies begin to coordinate with each other that are addressing the same kind of need. But here's, here's where that thinking is challenged. The needs that we have, homelessness, for example, is really the, the fruit of the need. Often, the root is somewhere else. And the needs that we're having, that we're dealing with in our population, are much more complex than they've ever been before. So probably, what would help, more than anything else, is if we could, as we fundraise, if we could fundraise and put, what you have is you have a lot of silos that are out, that are fundraising for specific causes and for very unique needs. If we could pool more money together, and then distribute it based on community needs, and not just looking at the agency, but look at the need. And what we're, we have shifted to is to take a look at the individual clients. What do they need in order to move out of homelessness? For a homeless person, if you just sometimes just build a house, that doesn't always address the true need, and you know that as well as anybody. So that's what we're working to do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Gaudet?
Thank you, Mayor. David, back to the 211. Getting the word out, how are you really doing that? And I make that reference that some time ago, I believe, the Homeless Council was wanting to put up some panhandling signs, but they never really come to a conclusion about what they really wanted to put on it. Where could they call, or anybody could call for assistance, or the person willing to give, where they could give to? Would this, the 211 be open to that type of advertisement on panhandling signs or anything like that, please?
Well, what 211 will do would be probably replacing the need for that. So rather than going and trying to find a pamphlet or something that was connected to a sign, if we can get all of the services in the 211 line, then the person that's trying to access services could simply dial 211 and get the information that they need.
You mentioned that locally in Davis County, there's 22 agencies that United Way serves, is that correct?
Yes.
Of those 22, how many of them have, for example, connections to national organizations where the monies awarded to the agencies go outside of Davis County? Or is, are there any? Does all that money stay here local to an agency that's located here, or does any of it go to Louisville, or anywhere else to be able to support?
In some cases, I think, I think that it would. For example, you have some regional offices where their back-office work is actually in another area, and the reason that that is, is the economy of scale. And we've got some regional offices, but we only fund services that are provided in that particular county. Those are the things that we do. So for example, in Ohio County, volunteers in Ohio County make the decisions for what agencies get money in Ohio County. In Davis County, volunteers in Davis County get the, make the decision for what's happening there. In our six-county area and seven-county grad area, the, the needs are different in Webster County than they are in Davis County, as they would be in Hancock County.
The bottom line, there are some agencies that where the money does go to Louisville or Frankfurt to support what they're doing here in Davis County?
Well, the, it may be that there are regional offices there. So I, I don't have that right in front of me.
Okay.
We were told to come down and talk about 211, and so that's, that's the information that I have.
We're not finished with you yet.
Okay, that's...
Mr. Sanford?
Oh, I just have a real quick. Hey, David, how do you get the word out about 211 to the, to the masses? How do people know how to contact it?
Well, this is one of the reasons that we're here today, is obviously, we're contacting our city and county officials right now.
Okay.
And letting you know that this service is available.
Right.
And then, we've already got marketing materials.
Okay.
We're working in conjunction with the United Way in Henderson, to where we'll have a lot of joint materials. Once we get the 211 open in each of our counties, then you're going to see more advertising about that.
Thank you.
David, I'll apologize. We, as a group, have been struggling with some of the needs at some of our social services. We talked about trying to do something, and, because there's such an imbalance between the arts that we give to, and, in my view, I'm only speaking for myself, and what we give to social services. And so that's why we were kind of wanting to know the list that United, because you know, when I was here before, we're the ones that asked United Way to take it off our shoulders, so we wouldn't get drilled every 30 minutes about trying to help them, because we don't, we're not professional. So from what you're saying today, you really assess the needs, not, and then the agency, or...
Right.
And in my mindset, you'd go to this mess and just assess them, and say, "Well, you got a good director, and you're helping 34 ladies, and six or seven of them are getting jobs." You're actually looking at the needs as much as the agency, and trying to put, partner those two together.
Yes, sir. And that is, and over the time, over the last 10 years, the needs that we started with, some of those are still there, but we found more efficient ways to address those needs. So then, what we do is work with our agencies to address those issues in a more efficient manner.
So could we have a list of the agencies that you serve at some point in time? We already got it?
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Nate, I didn't know with that. Yeah, we already got it. Okay. So that way, we can kind of, because we're trying to determine how we want, we might want to help in some way, but we want to, we want to know if we're assessing it the right way, or we're just doing it because I got a friend here, that Mag's got a friend there, or, you know, we want to make sure that if we do something, you know, we're doing it in an appropriate way that won't, you know, look kind of silly.
Mayor, I feel for you. We have, I will tell you, that we have agencies that are doing a good job, that are serving an identified need, that have a base, and they qualify for United Way funding, but we don't have the funding to give.
Right.
And that is something that we're all trying to, trying to wrap our hands around it on how we can do a better job of that.
Well, you know, a lot of these boards got some real horsepower on them. I mean, you know, they got some people in this community that are really involved with them. And I think, you know, we're just trying to look at a way that, you know, for us to have a better knowledge of how you distribute your funds. And now that you, now that you explain homelessness and all the other things, and then, it makes a whole lot more sense to me.
Well, and we're happy that we've got two members from the city that are on our board, and they're, they're, as a matter of fact, for a long time, your treasurer was our treasurer, and...
He's still everybody's treasurer.
She's, she's a good one. And so, we try to keep that check and balance, and to make sure that the city's constantly aware of, as situations change, or as agencies have particular need, we make sure that our board's informed about that.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate your knowledge.
Well...
Anything else? Austin? No, I'm just kidding.
Well, on behalf of the United Way, we want to say thank you to you. We have been doing this for about 70 years, and have had a fair amount of success, but the success is only as good, and we only exist because of the kindness of others. As a matter of fact, generosity and appreciation are some of our core values. We want to express our appreciation to you, because without you, and without partners like you, there are literally thousands of people in our community that wouldn't have what they do. I'm talking about kids in after-school care. I'm talking about home visits to mothers who, new mothers who have no idea that a baby didn't come with instructions, and how to make their families work. We're talking about seniors that are shut in, that throughout the week may not see anybody except the Meals on Wheels person. We're talking about hospice services, after-school programs, that if they weren't in existence, there's no telling where the children would be. And if it wasn't for you, so, we wouldn't be able to do that. So if people ask you, "Are you helping my need? Are you, can you help our agency?", you may not be able to help their agency, but you're certainly supporting their cause, and for that, we're truly thankful.
So do you ever get like an anonymous donation to United Way?
Yes, and I'll be happy to pick up your check right now.
Pam, it's all on you now.
So, but we...
I got some bread pudding in the back.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate you doing, and we didn't mean to grill you. We just have, we really have a passion for trying, for helping the, those in need, I guess.
You know, and we, we recognize that. You know, and we, we recognize that, and one thing I can say about this commission is that there is, there is certain, in my certainty in my heart and the mayor, that you're passionate about the causes and you're looking to try to help. We may all have a different way of what's that gonna look like, but that's one of the things that we try to do, is to meld people together. And rather than people going off and doing this and going off and doing this and going off here, we can bring people together, then we can make our communities better and provide a better service. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the drilling box is Leland Hancock with Entertainment Destination Center update.
Hopefully we won't drill too hard today. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you, Leland Hancock, Assistant City Manager. Here today to talk to you about the Entertainment Destination Center. Have to say, after many months of planning, I have to thank Dana Coombs, our ABC Administrator, Tim Ross, for working through all the regulations that revolve around this process, meeting with the state, downtown businesses, happy to debut Owensboro's newest entertainment area, the district. So that being said, we invite citizens to come down, dine, drink, and discover. What this district will do, it adds to an attractiveness to our downtown. Basically, it allows patrons of freedom to get out and discover everything downtown's Owensboro has to offer. I'm happy to say or excited to say, Friday after five is gonna be our first partner in the district, and they're going to use the entire mapped area, which you'll see runs from basically the river to Fifth Street, Eastern Side, Critten, which picks up the Miller House, we call it J.R. Miller Boulevard, basically, over to Poplar Street. So of the fourteen businesses in this area that can serve alcohol, nine currently are on board. I would imagine about two or three more turning in their paperwork by Friday this week, and then I would say after the first weekend outliers there would be getting on board as well. So you'll actually see this week, starting tomorrow, is there a, Public Works will be installing these signs. Basically, it allows you, it says, welcome to the district, you have to sign it, correct? And then this says, you're leaving the district, disposing of your alcoholic beverages.
His stage is better.
He's gripping the sign and grinning, right?
Public Works will be installing all of those at every one of the intersections into the districts, basically define that area. And with that, you'll also have a cup. So each one of the restaurants that's involved currently will have one of these cups, and as you leave the restaurant, they will put it into here. And the unique thing about
Full twelve ounces?
Full sixteen ounces, Mayor.
Sixteen?
This cup serves threefold. Number one, it allows the local law enforcement to know who is carrying a drink in the downtown area. It allows the businesses to know who's participating, who's not, to actually pay a fee to get these cups from us, so we provide those to them, and their fee covers the cost of these cups. But the third and most important thing is you have the rules in your hand. So it tells you where you can go and what you can do with this cup, and then it gives you a website as well to give you the map. And we'll have some more advertising going out on social media and things like that, have some signs up. We'll be updating our downtown signage that'll outline this area of the district as well. So this is important piece, if you're walking around with open container and don't have this. Chief Elam
Walk around in this little area if that, you can't be out there at Walmart walking around.
Absolutely, absolutely, Mayor, no. And they're cheap cup, they're made to be disposable. And all of the businesses voted, made the decision that as I leave one premise, say I'm Friday after five and I go to Colby's. Colby's will not allow me to come in with this and neither will any of the other participating businesses. So there's tips, rules, and regulations on how they serve alcohol, and of course, they have to stay compliant with those, so they wanna make sure they know how many drinks that you've had, who they've served, and how they've served you, so. Covers that. Actually, I told you that the Friday after five wants to use the entire district, so this Friday, I encourage all of you to come out and utilize that, so. Sir?
So I've got this cup and I, I'm at Friday after five and I fill it up and I walk down. If I'm gonna go into Bar Louis, I've gotta empty it.
You have to empty, actually, you're gonna dispose of the cup.
Then if I take it in with me and want another drink, put it in and I can take off to the next location, but you can't go in a location with something in it.
You can't go into it, period. They're gonna require you to toss it and then they're gonna give you another
Okay, so that's, that was the thing, okay. So the cup's gone.
One time you sold it.
You gotta go in a new one. Great, that's, that's what I wanna know.
And in talking to some of the business owners, basically, you know, the biggest part of this, the economic development piece of this, is the turnover of that table. So as I come in and sit down, I order food and I'm sitting there, and I finish my dinner and I'm having a drink. The turnover of that table and having another guest sit down and order a meal again as I'm waiting to finish my drink, this will speed that process up somewhat, so I can get up and leave, I don't have to sit there, and I can stroll down to the next business or location, to the band, see what's going on, thus more people can sit at those tables and they turn those over and they make more profit. So they're very happy to be involved, and as I said, I think we'll see a few more on, involved before the end of the week as well. So we just had an additional one this morning, which was Lure, so.
So on this particular event, Friday after five, are they the permit holder?
Actually, the city of Owensboro, city manager is the permit holder for this one, but the city is listed as additionally insured, there's a permitting process, but for the ABC license, the city manager is on there. But there's a permit for that through Tim's office for the, for each event, correct?
Yeah.
And it goes through Dana Coombs, she actually checks to make sure that you have all the licensing to do and utilize the space. Tim checks for the insurance, there's those types of things, so all the rules and regulations are followed. That vetting process is followed, once they check off, then it comes to the city manager's office for final approval on that.
Okay, so if a particular bar is gonna participate, they have to, what do they have to do?
If a particular bar wanted to just have an event on their
No, I mean, be a part of this
Oh, they pay the fee, the three hundred dollars.
Okay, good.
And they're gonna operate underneath the Friday after five event for these, the ones that are involved in this one. But if an individual bar wanted to have their own, they would have a permitting process to go through
Gotcha.
street closures and all those things, accommodate that as well.
And this three hundred dollar event, I mean, permit is per event, in other words?
No, it's a one-time
One time for the whole Friday after five, okay.
And then each permit, depending on what's going on, through Tim's office, there are certain fees and things that apply, if there's street closures, if there's, you know, different things that they require, then there's fees associated, just like they would with barbecue festivals, all those types of things.
Thank you. Leland, I wanna thank you and who all were involved in getting this going, because I've been talking about this since I got here. And they've been working on it and working on it and working on it, so we're finally getting it going and I, I'm excited about it. But I do, I don't know, have you ordered two million of these already?
No, we have quite a few on hand to cover, but we think will take to cover the season.
Just a question.
Mm-hmm.
Would it, would it help to add this bottom little thing there about the no alcoholic beverages allowed in the playground? I mean, just under that somewhere?
Sure.
Because I think it would, it would be important so that people, it's just an added, you know, like, don't take this in the Shelton Memorial, don't take this in the playground.
Absolutely. And we'll have signs up within Smothers Park for this playground area and the Shelton Memorial as well, that take no alcohol in these areas. But that'd be an easy enough change on the next door.
Because I'm just saying, you know, once they read all this stuff, they can just go on and read the rest of that and then it, you know, it might, just a suggestion.
Absolutely. So, you know, from the River Park Center, we have Spectra, we have Burger Theory, VFW, Lure, Bluegrass is on there, Miller House as well, so we've got a lot of participation and hope to see a few more here shortly, so. Are there any questions on that? Yes, sir?
Leland, just a quick question. Can you go in, go into a retail, no, so?
Now, we'll actually have some decals on the doors of those
Like, you know, a dress shop, you can't walk in there with a drink, okay? I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I was just wondering how many drinks it would take before you can't read that?
I don't need to read it once.
If you, if you can.
So you could take this home with you and bring it back the next week and use it again?
Technically
That's my only
Technically, I wanna say that could happen, but I think the likelihood is improbable most of the time. You're gonna have a hard time carrying in with law enforcement that's down there and the local businesses are not gonna allow you to bring it onto their premises as well.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Excellent. OB KY project, that was one of the fulfillment, was trying to get this EDC.
Absolutely.
And for parking garage update, please, Leland Hancock.
All right, at the last commission meeting, you all requested an update. At this point, we're glad to say that parking garage is complete, all of the punt list items have been completed. We had a few issues with concrete cracking, some issues with the malfunctioning of the control system, that we're working through the bugs there. I have to thank, you know, Wayne Shelton and Kevin Coian as well, as Danae Galloway, or not Danae Galloway, but Danae in Finance, I'm sorry, with the, the rest of their help and IT for working out some of those bugs. It has been very difficult.
And who built this garage?
A and K, is that correct? About a seven-point-six million dollar
Out of town construction company.
So we have one additional change order that we've issued to close up the exterior doors on the stairwells to keep the moisture out, which will require ventilation system and a few things to keep that from getting, you know, musty and damp in there, as well as additional drain. So once that works completed, parking garage will be effectively one-hundred percent complete.
And so our key fobs operate those gates?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does anybody know that?
No.
Just elected officials, right?
There's a few other key staff that use that as well.
Okay, any questions about the garage? Commissioner Conder?
Thank you, Mayor. Leland, if, for example, we just had the barbecue festival this past weekend, you're about to kick off Friday after five, do the gates, are there a timer to where, as some are other gates, when it hits five o'clock, the gates come up, it's open parking, and it's not ticketed or anything like that? Or does everybody still have to go in, get a ticket, and then pay for it to come back out? How's that working?
For larger events where we know, like the convention center's going to have a huge crowd, we'll actually staff that gate to allow the inflow to just continuously cruise through, and they'll be handed a ticket as they come in, and then basically that ticket will be their exit on the way out. So we do utilize that as well. So you'll take that money upfront and then they can leave as quickly as possible once the event's over, so there's no holdup.
The Friday after five, this Friday, how, how's that gonna work?
Friday after five is probably not one that I would anticipate utilizing that. If that becomes a problem, of course, we can address it, but I think with the way people show up for Friday after five, it's not like a concert where it starts at seven and folks get there thirty minutes before and they leave as a huge mass when it's over. People sort of trickle into Friday after five and then trickle out as well, so I don't see it being a huge traffic jam. But if it is, it's something we can address.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Saturday is city night, Friday after five, am I right?
Friday.
Friday?
Right.
Not Saturday?
Friday after five.
I see if anybody was paying attention. I don't know, two people said something about
Gonna roll into Saturday.
Friday night, Friday after five is city night.
That's correct.
Are we sponsoring that?
Yes, we are.
They come out of the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Agency funding.
Okay, good. We've got a few giveaways, thanks to that Seeso, so we hope everybody will show up. Okay, anything else of importance? City project list, city manager Nate Pagan.
Have the list to review, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Update on the bridge light?
That'd be me again, Mayor. We're working through that.
Assistant City Manager. We've got a e-comm to the point of having ninety percent drawings, we're actually going to meet with them again next week, finalize those. Those drawings have been submitted to the state, to the Coast Guard, and to the city as well for review. The state has a few questions around traffic control, as well as the Coast Guard on controlling the lights. One of the Coast Guard measures that they require, and they actually utilize this on some of their other bridges, is they'll actually have a control point, so when they come up to the bridge, they can actually turn them off for a period of fifteen minutes. That was something that they had to have in order to ensure that there were no collisions on the river. So whether it was running into one of the buttons on the bridge or another barge, those types of things, so that's
They'll be pretty bright lights then, aren't they?
Well, it's, it's not that they're bright, they just don't want any confusion, and that's what they do on all of the bridges up and down the Ohio, so that have lighting systems like this.
Hmm.
So they'll go out for a period of a few moments and then they'll be back on as they were, so. But hopefully have this finalized and we'll have a bid out, shooting for early June, first week of June, and then a bid opening about the fifteenth of July.
Paving program. Told us there was gonna be a little more paving, is that true? Is that right? Wayne? Devin?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Right now, we're working on our, we're calling it the spring list, that's the streets we'll have done by end of this current fiscal year, and we'll be putting out another bid probably in a couple weeks for what we're gonna call the fall list, and that'll be the, the streets we get done by, between this fiscal year and the end of the calendar year.
Who's doing that Fourth Street project over the railroad bridge? That state?
No, that's us, city.
How come we're doing that on that Highway sixty street? Get that deal.
Yeah, it's a city street. I think it's, I think it's a swap.
Oh, is that part of one of those swaps?
Yeah.
You know, and I have one more question. I was going down there the other day and they had just roughed it up, you know, took all that stuff up, and they were going down there and putting, they were putting the white line on it. And they came right back and covered the white line up, and then they put the white line back out. Is that, is that the normal way they do it, so they can tell where the middle of the road is?
No, that one fortunately got paved back pretty quick. Typically, we, we temporary stripe it.
I thought that was kinda weird.
Because it's, yeah, it's gonna be, usually it's gonna be sometime before it gets paved back, but that one they were able to come back and, and get it covered back up pretty quick.
That makes sense, 'cause it's like the next day, all those stripes are all covered up.
Yeah.
It's very striped again.
The, the other section of Fourth to the east that we've got milled, it'll be, it'll be milled for a little bit longer, so just, you have to bear with us on that one, but...
It's good for the front-end line shops, I think.
Yeah.
Any update on TIF, do we need to talk about that at all? Ms. Hammerick?
Well, I'm happy to say that we've got our reports, request for reimbursement for both of the TIFs filed with the state, filed them timely, so it's in their hands now, and we're hoping for reimbursement sometime this fall, we're hoping.
That's totally dependent on Frankfurt, is that correct? Or is there a timeline that they have to reimburse us?
Yeah, it's kind of, they play by their rules. So I think that there's, there's a guideline out there, but I know there's been, sometimes with other cities, they've exceeded that timeline, so
I've had a couple of Mayor's comments, they don't get in a big hurry on getting your money back.